Good evening to you all and welcome to the Monday, February 11th, 2019, Meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted to have you all here with us this evening. Before we get to the Pledge of Allegiance, I see we have a few Boy Scouts in the audience. Would you all like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, come on down. Let's get started. All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mr. Z is out for Family Business. And Mayor Tarter?
Yes, here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And let's go on to the meeting agenda. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Looks like we don't have any proclamations or special presentations this evening. Any oaths of office to administer?
Is there anybody here for an oath of office? No, not tonight, thank you.
All right. So before we move on to public comment, a few words about public comment. We're going to hear written comments from the clerk in just a moment, then we're going to go on to public comment. If you'd like to speak this evening, all of you are welcome. We just ask that you fill out a speaker slip. They're available in the back of the room. And then when you get to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And if you could, keep your comments to three minutes. We'd most appreciate it. Before we move on, the reason Mr. Z is not here is his mother passed away over the weekend. So, and it's a very difficult time for Dan, his brother, and his family. And I wonder if we might just take a moment of silence to honor him and his mother, if All right, thank you. We also have another untimely death, as I think many of you may be aware of. Gary Laporta passed away over the weekend. And I think most of you probably know Gary, but was heavily involved in all aspects of our community and the fabric of really all we are. I think the current president of CBC and Chamber of Commerce and all sorts of Falls Church institutions. And so I wonder if we could also do a moment of silence for Gary, if we could. All right. My hope is that we can find a way to honor Gary as a community in the near future. Not sure what shape or form that's going to take just yet, but I know there's going to be a lot of desire for people to celebrate his life and contributions to the city. I don't know if anyone wants to say anything before we move on about Gary or anything for that matter, but you're certainly welcome to, if you'd like. And any member of the public is also welcome to speak, if you'd like. If not, we'll go on and move to receipt of public comments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we had several comments asking for an ease in, easing in restrictions on owning certain exotic animals. Joe Sevier, Nancy McCray, Kathy McCray, Laura Stricker, Belinda D'Agostino, Meg Hensel, Christine Nalouzi, and Tahasiin Sheek all wrote on that matter. We had Lisa Varuxis on Grove Avenue wrote with concerns about the location of the construction trailer at West Street on the Founder's Row site. And I believe staff was in correspondence with her. Mr. Tim Stevens provided comments on amending the interim agreement for the West Falls Church project, as did Fred Thompson. And he had several questions that I think the city manager was addressing. And Mary Chavez also provided comments on that issue and had several questions.
All right, thank you very much. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to move on to receipt of public comments. At the present, I have two speaker slips. You're certainly welcome to have more, if you all would like. But the first speaker is FX, is it Giacano?
Giacchio.
Okay. Come on down. You're part of Troop 681. Do you have anybody else you want to bring on down with you?
Um...
(laughing) Well, you'll get a pin if you come forward. It's Falls Church City PIN. All right, there we go.
So, I am here with, so my name is FX Giacchio from 102 West Westmore Road. And we are working on our citizenship of the community merit badge. So, one of the requirements is basically to attend a state council meeting, school board meeting, or something like that, and basically discuss what they were talking about with your merit badge counselor. So, that's about it.
That sounds pretty good. How about you? You got anything to say?
Not really.
All right, that's fine. Fair enough. All right, come on down. We're going to give you a handshake and a pin, and we'll go from there. How about?
Are you ready? Right. Good smiles. Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot, guys. What have we been talking about so far? No, I don't think we have any idea either. All right, so, anyone else wish to speak at this time? Oh, we do have one more, that's right. So, Sonia Lu?
Hello.
Hi, how are you? Come on down.
Okay, so, my name is Sonia Lu, and I live at 202 James River Court. Okay, so, my name is Sonia, and I'm a student rep on the advisory board to the Recreation and Parks Department. And I'm here tonight to talk about a project that we've been working on, which is the No Smoking in Our Parks campaign. So, the project started with posters that we put up around the parks in Falls Church, and we also created stickers that we put on the trash cans. I have a sticker here tonight. And also recently, I wrote a letter to the editor that was published in the Falls Church news press. I also have a copy of that here with me. But the letter mainly addressed the issues that arise from smoking in parks, from higher health risks to littering and other environmental problems. And, as you know, the council has recently discussed the legislative side of things when addressing smoking in public places. And for the project, we decided that the next step would be for me to come here and speak in front of the council to raise awareness of the project and the issue we are tackling. As the project moves on, we're hoping to incorporate a social media campaign and raise a high level of public action. Thank you.
That's a great idea. Thank you for taking this initiative. Does anybody have any questions for Sonia?
I just want to make a comment. Sonia, so I, one, I want to thank you for this. We've expressed a lot of frustration up here on council in terms of our ability to do things as a local jurisdiction in light of the fact that we're in a Dillon Rule state. And so, I encourage you guys to continue to do your part. Frankly, I think it's something that a lot of the community would benefit from, certainly would embrace. But again, unfortunately, we can't do much from a legislative standpoint. I was jogging past one of the parks earlier this week and saw one of the stickers on the trash can, and I thought, oh, that's nice. We got the cities finally, we're taking a stand, we're going to put stickers out. Lo and behold, it was you guys. It was a grassroots movement, so thank you for doing that. I sincerely appreciate it. And then to you guys back there, I want to make a comment. And I say this anytime the scout troops come up here, but I was an Eagle Scout, growing up. It's a fantastic program that you guys are in. You're going to learn a ton. Stick with it. It's a great learning environment, and you guys are going to take skills that you learn during scouts throughout the rest of your life. Highly encourage you guys to stick with it and earn every merit badge you can, because there is some practical application once you get out of that scout program. So I encourage all of you guys to step up and continue to take part in helping lead this city. We've got a vacuum of quality leadership in many areas of our country, and it takes folks like you to step up and really make a difference. So thank you very much for everything that you guys do. Really appreciate it.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly?
I just have one thing for Sonia. And that is, I have seen the signs that you made around the parks, too, for the last year or so, and they're really good. So I just want to say thank you. They're entertaining and fun, and they make you stop and think. So thanks for doing this as well.
Would you like to come up and get a pin and maybe get our congratulations? Ms. Hardy?
So I had the privilege of being the liaison to Parks and Rec and all the creative work that Sonia and the rest of the Parks and Rec Board did. If I could request that communications kind of help boost their efforts on social media. Mary Beth mentioned the really cool posters they put up, and I think that would be really fit for a social media campaign. They had some really creative slogans like "Lungs at Play," "Please Don't Smoke," and things like that. So I think that would be really cute, and our community would appreciate that, too. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Duncan?
I just wanted to circle back to talk about Gary for a second. I just flew in from Knoxville, so this is all kind of just washing over me right now. But while I was down in Tennessee, I read the online tributes, and it's just really remarkable, and it's not surprising, but it's overwhelming, the anecdotes and the testimonials that people poured forth with online just immediately. And as I was flying back today, I thought, you know, I would have seen Gary here tonight because he'd been here, because he's usually at council meetings. I'd have seen Gary in the morning at the chamber board meeting. He was secretary, he'd been running the, you know, the computer. I'd have seen him Wednesday night at the CBC XCOM meeting, you know, Saturday night at the Creative Cauldron event. I mean, it just hardly, literally, a day would go by. And of course, you'd see him at City Hall, you know, at the mayor's meeting. He'd stick his head in and let us know what we should be doing. And it's just, it's a lot to take on board, that somebody who's so interwoven in the fabric of the community is not with us anymore. It's just, I think, a reminder that, you know, we should all treat each other like you may not see him again, because you may not see him again, first, and second, that, you know, all the good things that he did, each of us should try to pick up one of those things, and maybe all together, we could contribute as much as he did individually. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And again, there hopefully will be a day in the near future where we'll be able to, as a community, celebrate his life and accomplishments and contributions to our city. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak publicly for public comment? All right, let's move on to the next item, which is the annual report of the Planning Commission.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Connolly, and council members. As the Chair of the Planning Commission, I'm honored to present to you the 2018 Annual Report. Hopefully, you have received a copy in your packet. I don't know if you have. As you may have noticed, the planning staff has completely revamped both the format and the organization of our efforts. Despite a two-year term limit for Chairman in our commission's rules and procedures, this is actually the third time I come before you to present the annual report, due specifically to the work associated with the two West End projects, the commission agreed with my request to suspend the rules so that I might serve in this role for another year. In our view, this will allow for essential continuity and allow me to complete more of the initiatives I wish to accomplish before turning over the chairmanship. As you can see from the submitted report, the Planning Commission was very busy in 2018, with 21 regular meetings and 10 separate work sessions. As always, the commission dealt with a broad spectrum of issues, including the CIP. Other major initiatives we dealt with were the Broad and Washington Special Exception, the Founder's Row Special Exception and Site Plan. And I speak for myself when I say that I'm very happy to see the demolition has begun on that site, after a long, very long process. The school site rezoning, several subdivisions, the Mary Riley Stiles Library variance, approval of the Fellow's property, special use permit for Don Byer Volvo, and last but not least, the many meetings on the George Mason High School Site Plan and the West Falls Church proposal. We also had representatives on many boards and commissions to keep us abreast of the issues that are important to good planning. In addition, as part of the speaker series that we instituted two years ago, we heard presentations on land conservation, commercial property clean energy programs, smart growth for Falls Church, housing trends, wayfinding, rating systems for sustainable infrastructure, carbon emissions for buildings, and the fiscal impact model. It is my view that this series has been a tremendous success for the commission and allows us to understand best practices in other jurisdictions in the area and the country as a whole. It also provides a valuable resource to the community. In a similar vein, I'm pleased to announce that as of the end of 2018, the planning staff completed our Planning Library Initiative. This is a comprehensive set of web links on both the planning department's website and the commission's to consolidate most of the relevant information about the various plans, studies, codes, et cetera, that are related to planning and development. While this information was previously available somewhere, without a central repository, it was difficult for the various stakeholders to locate and access. While providing web links may not seem like a big deal, the amount of effort required to track down all the relevant information was. I would now like to briefly speak about the future and what we intend to focus on over the upcoming year. Based on our discussions to date, the Planning Commission has several major goals. These and several others will all be on our agenda at our upcoming annual retreat on Monday, March 4th. Number one, we want to continue our work on the George Mason High School Campus Project. This includes both the high school and the approximately 10 acres slated for economic development. Similar to last year, I anticipate this will be our major focus outside of ongoing business, the ongoing business of planning. The commission plays a vital role in this project, and a considerable portion of our agenda over the upcoming weeks will be dedicated to these efforts. As has been repeated numerous times over the past few years, this is a project that will transform our city, and as such, it demands our full attention as the commission. Our second goal is to continue work on improving and updating the comprehensive plan. This guiding document must continue to be reviewed and refreshed in order to represent the ever-changing goals and objectives of our citizens. Over the next year, we will focus on the demographics, housing, and environmental chapters. In the updating process, the Planning Commission reaffirms its commitment to be a forum where the citizens of Falls Church can continue to express their views on projects and in developments that wish to alter our city. In the past, our meetings have generated great interest and been a place where citizens can be heard and their point of view considered. Thirdly, over the next year, the commission will continue its focus on sustainability, both economic and environmental. Economically, we are committed to approving projects that will continue to positively benefit Falls Church and its citizens. Environmentally, with each project, we are becoming more and more steadfast in our requirements that new construction in the community adhere to the highest environmental standards. While we understand there are numerous issues and priorities on the council's agenda, the commission has also expressed its interest in having the council advance the outstanding issues associated with Greenway Downs overlay and the Paper Streets designation. In both instances, this work is largely done, but needs council's time to make these zoning and land use map project updates occur. Before I conclude my report, I also want to take this opportunity to thank our Planning Director, Paul Stoddard, and the entirety of the planning staff. None of the accomplishments of the commission that the commission has achieved over the past year could be possible without amazingly strong staff and tremendous support they provide. On behalf of my fellow commissioners, I thank you for your time and look forward to another year diligently serving the city of Falls Church and the city council. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for the great work you, as the Planning Commission as a whole, has done, and also you personally. It's been a pleasure to work with you on some of the projects we've worked together on. But as you've just described, all the great things you're working on, this is probably the busiest time in the city's history as far as planning and development goes, with the West End, Founder's Row, Washington Broad. I mean, so many things going on, so many new initiatives, and I think so many good things happening, and you guys are a major reason for that, so...
Yeah, it's exciting time, for sure.
Our thanks to you. Do we have other questions from other folks up here? I imagine people... Mr. Duncan, do you have something?
Sure. I'll start. As the mayor said, I agree with all he said. In the history of the city, many distinguished folks have served on the Planning Commission, but I think when the, when the real history of the city is written, this period of time in recent years that you've been on the Planning Commission and have been leading it in the last couple of years is going to, you know, rank at the very top of dynamism and vision and, you know, improving the quality of life here. So thank you for your work, and you're correct that the staff is firing on all cylinders, too. Thanks to them. The only question I wanted to put forward, not to answer tonight, but just to ask you all to discuss it, as you do so well with other tough questions. As we work on the West Falls Church Economic Development Project, it seems clear that there's going to be a substantial residential component to it. And my understanding of the way the plan is developing, the objective is to have housing that particularly attracts younger people with smaller micro units, one-bedroom studios. And at the other end of the spectrum, condominium units, the first condos we built here in the city in a significant number of years, which would be attractive to empty nesters, people who may be selling the single-family home they've got now and moving, want to stay in the city, but they, you know, are moving into condominium. So the question is, that you hear out in the community, is, are we going to be able to sustain our support for the school system if the demographic mix of the city's population changes? If we have young people who don't yet have kids in schools, and older people whose kids in school have graduated and moved on, in a larger percentage of our population mix, is that going to put at some risk support for the public school system? You all have, you know, exposure and communications with other communities. I'm sure Falls Church is not the only community that's been facing this dilemma or this question. And so I look forward to hearing what you all, you know, learn from other communities. I mean, I have my hunch. My hunch is that as long as we can keep the tax rate reasonable, then the demographic mix will work out okay for us, and the city's traditional support for public education will remain. But I think, you know, the community wants and deserves a serious inquiry into that question and the best information you all can bring from other communities that would help us answer it.
Absolutely. We'll happily look into it.
All right, other, Ms. Hardy, and then Mr. Littenhouse?
First of all, congrats, Mr. Wadiska, on your third term as Chair.
I don't know if "congrats" is the right word, but I'll take it.
I was interested in kind of your priorities for 2019 and the focus on the comp plan, specifically the demographics and the housing needs. Probably about two months ago, we had a pretty lively discussion about our affordable housing policy in council, which we did adopt and pass. But I think it brought up the discussion of needing to talk about kind of housing in general, like where do we envision ourselves going in the city? What are the housing needs across the entire region, and how does Falls Church fit into that? So given that you and the planning team are responsible for that comp plan, I'd ask, we just have a really broad community discussion on kind of what we envision the future of Falls Church to look like. So what is the region going to grow to? I've seen some reports that, you know, we have a massive housing shortage that we're envisioning.
That was part of our speaker series.
Yep. And what part Falls Church should play in that role? And therefore, how many housing units do we need to build? And of those, how many of those should be affordable, and what kind of community we want to build? And how does that all true back to that 2040 vision that we talked about, wanting to be that diverse, welcoming community for all generations? Because I think, in turn, that then impacts our transportation planning and all the other details that, you know, we're going to talk about in the comp plan. But I would just ask that we kind of engage the community in that discussion, because we often talk about the details of it down the road, about, well, gosh, are we ready to approve, you know, 300 units of new housing without that broader discussion? And I think that broader one is really important for the community.
I couldn't agree more. Yeah. We began to address it and heard a nice presentation on it, but as we go through that part of the comp plan update, we'll definitely engage the broader community on this issue.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Russ, thanks for coming again. You and the rest of your fellow Planning Commission members, a couple that are here tonight. I will tell you, as someone on council, and a lot of what happens in this city outside of the fantastic work that staff does is really volunteer, it is. And given the quality of the folks that you guys have on the Planning Commission and all of the issues that we're grappling with, and yes, I would agree, this is, you know, a 100-year kind of span of time that we are building in this city over a short period of time. It's, helps me sleep easier at night, knowing that there's a bit of check and balance in terms of focus and attention, whether it's the Environmental Committee, whether it's Planning Commission, whether it's Architectural Advisory Board, the amount of work that goes into focusing on these projects, I think some of us take for granted. I certainly did, before I actually was on council and had an opportunity to work more closely with you guys. The hours put in are just, it's relentless. It really is. And so I think you guys have done a fantastic job. One of the things that I would ask, and I know you guys are thinking about this in terms of 2040 and the comprehensive plan, what we are planning for today on that West End site is really going to be a catalyst for that entire area and west end of town. And I think what you're going to find is that there are some landholders on that side of town, one, that are already starting to assemble and think about the future of their sites, but are very much looking at what's happening on that West End site to guide some of the decisions that they're going to make in terms of development. And so, as we are all in and fully committed, and all the resources are focused on the high school site, what Virginia Tech is doing next door, what Womata is doing, we cannot take our eye off the ball in terms of smart planning for the other parcels of land that are adjacent to that site, because as soon as shovels turn dirt on this site, there are going to be other folks that are intensely focused on what needs to happen on that end of town. And so, you know, it's a challenge to you guys, to council, the rest of the community that, yes, we are completely immersed in the here and now, but we still have to be thinking 20, 30, 40, 50 years beyond, because it'll happen a lot faster than we think. So I look forward to working with you guys on some of those decisions as they arise. And again, thank you guys for the attention and the quality of the work that you provide, because it makes our job easier up here. So thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. This is definitely a topic we've talked about. It's going to be a topic on our retreat, or what we actually call an advance. We think we're advancing Falls Church, not retreating, and so that's a sort of inside joke on our commission. So we will keep you up to date, and I think it is something that's really important. And, you know, I'm standing here before, and you guys are talking about the Planning Commission. I do want to say it's a really wonderful group of people, and we're working really well together, and we have a diversity of opinions. It's a wonderful group that we've assembled to this point, and we're making real progress because of the people that you guys have appointed. So thank you very much. It's been really a pleasure to be on the commission and a great team to work with. Thank you.
All right, before you go, why don't we come on and get a picture of you, maybe?
I don't get a pin?
You get a pin, too.[1543.21][1543.21](laughter) You got to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, if you want a pin.
I have everybody smile. Oh, that's a good one.[1582.21][1582.21](laughter)
Okay, well, let's move on now to council requests. Are there any requests from council? All right, well, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. If I could just say a word about Gary Laporta, also a city employee who touched so many people in this community. City Hall is just, was a very quiet and somber place today. And people who work with Gary closely, city employees, but so many people in the community, it's just, it's a big hole in our heart, for all the reasons that Mr. Duncan and the mayor noted. I think it's probably the first time, and maybe the last time in the city's history that we'll have someone who was a business owner and former president of the Chamber of Commerce, who also came to the city and worked as a tax collector or a tax assessor with the Commission of Revenue. Someone who could be at the same time the head of the Citizens for a Better City and also the chairman of the Employee Advisory Council, which is the body to represent the interests of workers, employees of the city. And he could do that wide span of things with complete authenticity and integrity, because he was always just himself, and that was such a great gift for all of us. So we will miss him very much. We will have an event for him, and I know that people want to join in in celebrating his life. Two other things to report. One, the community may not have noticed, but last, earlier this month, we transitioned to our new contract for solid waste services. We kept the same company of American Disposal Services, but it was a really outstanding procurement effort. And I just want to salute Jim Wise, our Head of Purchasing, Kate Walker, our Environmental Coordinator, Lonnie Marquetti, and our Public Works Office, and Chris McGow for their work in that procurement. They saved the taxpayers money. They also had some innovations in how we're delivering those services right now. And if I could particularly tip our hats to Lonnie Marquetti, who now, with Chris McGow having left the city for a position with Fairfax County, she's doing all of her old duties, but also managing this contract while we're recruiting the full-time solid waste coordinator for the city. So thank you to that team. And for the customers, things will look pretty much the same, but one thing I do want to note is that if you call for assistance for, you know, late pickup or a missed pickup or that type of sort of run-of-the-mill calls, and we would get those, you know, on a daily basis, they will now go straight to ADS. And part of the procurement process was to make sure that would be a seamless and effective process for our citizens. And it gets the city out of the middle for those routine calls. If there's a problem, there's an immediate escalation to a city staff, so we can address a problem. a problem if a citizen's not getting satisfaction through that process. But we think it will give people quicker service and get right to the issue with that change. So thank you to that team. And then lastly, I just want to also recognize our IT Services who've been working so hard on the City Hall project. The City Hall project will have many advances in the technology realm in terms of audiovisual, in terms of our new public safety dispatch. All the low voltage wiring in the city actually was designed in-house by our IT Services team, and they have been working really hard to make sure that that's all going to work effectively when City Hall opens. So I just wanted to note Jamal Matthews, Ganati Zachenko, Nate Dupree, and Charlie Hamilton, in particular, on our IT Services team, who have worked so hard to deliver that. And it's taken quite a bit of effort to get it right, and we're moving in that direction. So that's all of my report tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Shields? It was the city attorney's birthday last week. I will not embarrass you with a rendition of Happy Birthday, but I do want to wish you Happy Birthday. All right, if there's nothing for Mr. Shields, let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
Yes, our first item is a resolution, TR 19-03, resolution designating four new Falls Church specimen trees. And this is an item that requires an advertisement in the newspaper, which happened, and a public hearing.
All right, Mr. Shields? All right, welcome. I do, I see him. All right, are we ready for the big unveil? All right, let's do it. Our first one is Alex Hassan. Might he be here this evening? No, all right. Well, we'll make sure he receives this certificate. Lorraine Steinberg, did I say that right? No, it looks like she may have passed also. Scott Lowry? All right, come on down. Thank you so much for participating in this program. The trees are just such a, makes Falls Church such a special place. So we're happy that you have agreed to have this tree placed in specimen status. I'm going to go ahead and give that to you. I'm going to see if anyone else is here before we go ahead and turn around for a picture. Roberta Hopkins, is she here by chance? All right, looks like it's just you, Scott. Why don't we turn around? We'll get a picture and we'll get our hearty thanks from all of us again. Yeah, we appreciate it. All right, turn around. Wait, where are you going there? Come on back. Kate, you want to get in here?
We should probably also hold the public hearing and take a vote on this resolution as well.
Do it, all right. Well, not to say it's a foregone conclusion, but thank you. So let's go ahead and see, do we have, let's open it up to public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak as to this matter? Seen none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion?
With the TR 19-03, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second? All right, Madam Clerk?
Miss the second, I'm sorry. Mr. Snyder? Okay. Ms. Conley, yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right, congratulations to all.
Yes, we have TR 19-06, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement by and between the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation and the City of Falls Church concerning payment of funding for the city's proportionate share of capital funding for the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority Capital Fund.
All right, thank you very much. What say you?
Hi, I'm Carrie Onino. Thank you, Mayor Tarter and members of council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. As discussed at work session last week, staff recommends adoption of resolution TR 1906, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement by and between DRPT and the City of Falls Church concerning payment of funding for the city's proportionate share of capital funding for the Womata Capital Fund. This agreement, this agreement was requested by city staff to ensure well-documented implementation of state code. And before you attachment one is the agreement, the city shares anticipated to be $255,000 per year in FY 19 and FY 20, and an estimated $230,000 in FY 2021 and annually, once Loudoun County is included in the capital allocation. I'm happy to take any questions about the agreement or the staff report.
All right, thank you very much for your fine work. I'm going to ask maybe Mr. Snyder and see if he has any comments since you spent an awful lot of time working on these issues on behalf of the city.
No, I think it's a good idea. It was sort of recommended by DRPT that we do it this way, and this assures the flow of, as I understand, it's state money to cover our, some of our metro capital.
Correct. Mr. Snyder, it does implement the state code and ensures that the money that's from Northern Virginia City of Falls Church flows to DRPT and gets to Womata properly accounted. So localities support this as well.
All right, any questions or comments? Is there any public comment, anyone wish to speak to this matter? All right, thank you, Carrie. Do we have a motion with regards to this?
I move to adopt TR 19-06.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk will be here momentarily. And here she comes. We do.
And a second.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, our next item, please.
We have TR 19-07, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the interim agreement with Falls Church Gateway Partners for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. I'll give the staff report on this item, but I am joined by the city attorney, who's worked very hard on this agreement to try to make sure that it represents the city's interest to the best extent possible and is also working very hard on the comprehensive agreement simultaneously, as we've been doing this work on the interim agreement. I would also note that Carly Aubrey is here in the audience. We have received the special exception entitlement application for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project, and she is available to answer any questions that you might have about that and the overall process. What tonight, the council request is to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the interim agreement. And there are two principal things that the developer partnership is asking of the city. And one of those is a deferral of a portion of real estate taxes during the construction period of their project. In exchange, the city would receive a $200,000 per year increase to the land lease payments that would stretch out for the life of the lease. So that's one request. And the second request is an increase in residential density. And I'll describe the details of that in just a moment. And in exchange for that, there is two profit sharing measures that I'll describe in a bit more detail. So let me, with, those are the two principal issues that are on the table with this amendment. And let me just step back now first and just describe a little bit of background. First, we're in the interim agreement phase of the overall negotiations for this project. The interim agreement was entered into in December of 2018, and it sets forth a schedule, a series of security deposits that are required by the development team, and it lays out material terms that will be built into the comprehensive agreement that I referenced just a moment ago, which is scheduled for council consideration in May of 2019. We are currently in the due diligence period of that interim agreement. And in that due diligence period, the development team has raised some concerns they have on their end with the financeability of the project. And hence, after a series of closed-door discussions with the city council and a public presentation of these terms a week ago, it has been our effort to work to resolve those issues. We are procuring this whole process under the Public-Private Partnership Investment in Education and Infrastructure Act of Virginia in 2002. And that Public-Private Partnership Act envisions that, A, negotiations like this can happen in that procurement process, and two, it also envisions that in order to reach a mutually beneficial goals, that from time to time in the process, these types of negotiations are necessary. Ultimately, this is going to be a long process. We have a lot of work to do between now and in May, as we're working on the comprehensive agreement, as well as the land use applications that are now pending before the city. And that is really where ultimately everything will get resolved, that will lay out the terms for the lease that will stretch on into the future. A few things I would just note at the outset of this, some of the core material terms that are unchanged in the interim agreement, and those include the land payments, so the value that was presented to the public in December or November 19th with the council's action, and then a public meeting since then are unchanged. The phasing and overall schedule of the project is also unchanged. And the environmental goals that were enshrined in the material terms of interim agreement, those also are unchanged. And just to remind people, thank you, Cindy, for advancing the slides. The land payments are based on the schedule that's on the slide now up on the screen. Upon execution of the comprehensive agreement and approval of a special exception entitlement, the first payment for the land of $6.5 million would be paid according to the timing that's set out in the agreement. And then there'd be four payments of $7 million each that would begin in 2021 upon delivery of the property after the completion of the new high school, and then a $7 million payment each year through the year 2024. And that's for Phase 1 with a total value of $34.5 million. Phase 2 has a value of $10 million or appraised value, whichever is higher, for a total of $44.5 as the base land payments. And there's some additional provisions that I'll mention with potentially higher value towards the end of this presentation. So the first request on the next slide is a provision to, for deferral of real estate taxes during the construction period. We're forecasting that $16.5 million in real estate taxes would be paid over that construction to stabilization period from 2021 through 2026. Of that, under this agreement, $12 million would be paid through a payment in lieu of taxes, and $4.5 million is really the ask, that is what would be deferred. To have value come back to the city beginning in 2029 and then lasting through the term of the lease, there'd be a $200,000 per year increase in ground rent that would escalate at a rate of 2% per year, which has a nominal value of $48 million and a present value using a 3.5% discount rate of $7.1 million. On the next slide is a little bit more detail, the timing of the real estate tax payments that's being discussed. So year one, which is estimated to be the year 2023, year two, 2024, 20, so it's a four-year program, estimated to beginning in 2023. The provision in the agreement is that the pilot begins either in the year in which the foundation permits for the project, for the first building in the project are issued, that would be year one of the pilot, or the year, the year after the property is conveyed. And so the latest this could occur, this pilot could start is one year after the estimated date. It's in this chart. The, the information under the yellow bar is the total anticipated taxes if there were no commercial pilot that we're discussing tonight. And at the lower right-hand side, you'll see a $16.5 million in total payments. There are two principal components of that. One is the condo portions of the project, and the other part, the center column, is the leasehold, which would be the office building, hotel, senior, and apartment portions of the project. It is that center area, when you get into the next section below, under the gray bar, where the actual tax deferral occurs. And so instead of $3 million in estimated taxes in 2023, the pilot would have a payment of $1 million. Instead of $3 million in year two, it would be 1.5. And again, in year three, going up to $2 million. And then in year four, you're at full value, and the $3 million would be paid, which is what we're predicting the assessed value will be generating at that same time. So in total, a 4.5 projected deferral of taxes over the payment in lieu of taxes period. Shifting to the second principal issue in this amendment is an increase in residential density. What is requested is 150,000 square feet of increased residential uses on the site in Phase 1. 50,000 of that would be in senior housing, and 100,000 of that would be either in condos or in micro apartments. With that increase in residential, the commercial ratio for Phase 1 would be 30%, 30% commercial, 70% residential, which is down from 34% under the original proposal. Phase 2 is unchanged and would have a 64% commercial ratio. And the overall project at full build-out would have a 40% commercial ratio, which is down from the 43, which was originally envisioned. The fiscal analysis is underway. We have the special exception application that is pending, and the fiscal... Instead of, uh, uh, 3 million in year two, uh, would be 1.5. And again, uh, in year three, uh, going up to 2 million. And then in year four, you're at, uh, full value and, um, uh, the 3 million would be paid, uh, which is what we're predicting the assessed value will be, uh, generating at that same time. Um, so in total, a, a 4.5 projected, uh, deferral of taxes over the payment in lieu of taxes period. Uh, shifting to the, uh, the second principal, uh, issue in this amendment is an increase in residential density. What is requested is 150,000 square feet of increased residential uses on the, on the site and in phase one. 50,000 of that would be in senior housing and 100,000 of that would be either in condos or in micro apartments. Um, with that, uh, increase in residential, the commercial ratio for phase one would be 30%, 30% commercial, 70% residential, which is down from 34% under the original proposal. Phase two is unchanged and would have a 64% commercial ratio. And in the, the overall project at full build out would have a 40% commercial ratio, which is down from the 43, which was originally envisioned. The fiscal analysis is underway. We have the special exception application that is pending and the fiscal analysis is part of that. Uh, we've tried to accelerate that analysis just so we'd have some things to say about that, um, in, and tonight with the council's consideration of this amendment. Um, if, if the council will recall, the original net fiscal impact of phase one was forecast to be approximately $4.2 million. And that would be at full stabilization, full occupancy of all the uses in phase one. Um, there are kind of initial look at the fiscal analysis for the special exception amendment, uh, which would include the, the higher, um, amounts of residential that I just described would be approximately 500, uh, and, uh, to 600,000, uh, dollars per year net fiscal impact higher. So that's the combination of the, of the senior housing and the either condo or micro apartments. In addition, using, uh, all of the, um, actual, uh, pupil generation rates from existing multifamily housing in the city, uh, we're projecting approximately 47 pupils in the original, uh, proposal. And the additional residential uses that was just described would generate approximately 10 additional pupils. So I say this with some reservation, we're still doing our special exception analysis and that can be complex, um, but that's our initial run just to give, uh, the council a, sort of a sense of, uh, the order of magnitude or sort of the direction, uh, that this analysis is going in. There are two other, uh, provisions that I just want to note, um, in terms of the amendment. Uh, the first is a profit sharing provision. Uh, prior to beginning construction on the project and during the financing period, which would be in the year, uh, 2020, uh, the, uh, additional equity partners will be brought in. And at that time, there would be a new valuation of the base land value. And, uh, the provision in the interim agreement would provide that the city would receive 25% of any increase in land basis that would occur, uh, during that process. And that increase in value would be paid out to the city, uh, over payments number two through five. Those are the $7 million payments that are part of the core payments, uh, for the land for the project. In addition, uh, the capital event fee, which was part of the original interim agreement, it has, uh, it calls for a 0.5% fee on any sale or refinancing of the leasehold. We were calling a sale or refinancing a capital event. And so the city would, would receive a 0.5% fee of the value of that transaction. Um, in addition, for the condo sales, what was originally in the interim agreement was a 0.25% uh, fee on condo sales with the exemption for the first round of sales. The new provision strikes the exemption for the first sale. So that money would come to the city, um, earlier and, uh, would be something that would be more predictable in terms of, of the city managing its, uh, obligations to finance the bonds and, and the debt for the high school. Uh, lastly, I'll just, uh, note that the, uh, the additional land payment credits, these were addressed in the original interim agreement and now they're, um, clarified or, or modified. Uh, the city will receive, uh, an additional $2.5 million credit payable in 2021 if the city chooses to create a community development authority. And through the offices of that community development authority, um, issue infrastructure bonds for the project and provide the city's moral backing for such infrastructure bonds. Uh, the study of that is underway and, uh, that will be resolved in the comprehensive agreement. Secondly, uh, the shared garage has been subject to a great deal of discussion so far and, uh, will be something that we'll be spending a lot of time on in the, in the very near future. Uh, the city will receive an additional, uh, between 4.1 and 5.3 million payable in 2023 if, if the city agrees to a shared above-grade parking garage. The final number between that 4.1 and 5.3 figure will be based on the final number of spaces that the school board uses in that garage and the agreed upon average cost per space, uh, for that above-grade parking garage. The final terms for that also will be set forth in the comprehensive agreement. Um, so that is the, the summary. Um, as I noted at the beginning, the city attorney's been working just to get the, the wording correct in this agreement. That, uh, execution version is at the council's, uh, deus and also there are copies in the back for the public that, that spells out all these terms. So unless the city attorney wants to make any comments, um, we'll open it up for questions. I would also note, uh, that, uh, the development, uh, partnership is here as well and, and, uh, I'm sure would be happy to answer any questions. And I don't know if you wanted to make a presentation as well, um, at this time or respond to questions.
All right. Thank you all very much. Uh, questions? Yeah, go for it.
Um, I've got more questions, but I want to ask a couple upfront because I need to run some calculations and then I'll let, let it get into that give me a chance to go through the arithmetic. Remind me again what the total number of condos were in phase one before the request for additional density that could go either way? Number, number of condos and then total square footage of the condos? This is when the Boy Scouts leave. Not working on the finance merit badge tonight, apparently. Yeah. So how many units?
So, uh, in phase one, there was originally 175,000 square foot maximum for condos at a 1,250 square foot per unit average is roughly 140 condos.
And so this additional request for the density, my understanding in our conversations, um, with staff is that the additional 100,000 square feet could be micro units or condos?
Right.
Okay. Asking you to prognosticate at this point. Any idea how many of those would end up being condos? Is it an all or nothing?
No, it's not an all or nothing. So it, right, exactly. So it could be that it's a part of both, um, or it could be, um, one or the other. And we haven't figured that out quite yet. Um, our goal would be to more, more definitive about that as we get through the process with all of you over the next three months.
Do you anticipate them being of similar size, 1,250?
Yeah, I think if we... No, no, they wouldn't be smaller condos. So if we did more condos, they'd be a similar size. Um, and we're actually looking at what, whether the condo should be slightly larger. These are less units. The, and then on the micro unit size for the apartments, um, the average net square feet would be between 500 and 675. So figure 500 to 525 on average.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, one last question, then I'll pass it along and then come back at some point. Uh, the profit share mechanism?
Mm-hmm.
Always liked the idea of profit share similar to the capital event fee. Um, I was actually happy that we were able to negotiate that, which is part of the calculations I want to go through from a fiscal perspective, what that additional 25 basis points means on the first sale of condos. Um, the profit share mechanism, can you guys walk me through the mechanics of how we verify and audit what that value of the land is when you bring in additional equity partners? Are we talking about third-party appraisal? Is it just what you guys agree upon? How do we verify and validate what the actual value is and what our 25% of that is going to be?
Okay. Great question. So when we, uh, when we go to finance the, um, project, so we're, we're going to be spending money on, uh, over the next two years to get the project approved from a design perspective, get it fully ready to go and permitted. Um, when, right before we start construction, we'll bring in an equity partner as well as a lender, a bank. Um, so both of those will essentially review the final project right before we start construction. And we will have a budget as part of that project. Um, and in that budget, there'll be a land value line item within the budget, um, that they will base, you know, base upon the returns of the project and the costs that we will then have. They'll give us a value for land value. And then we would share that with all of you. You would be able to verify it. I would, I would assume whether you're still working with your consultant, Alvers Marcel, that might be a good way to, um, have them kind of go through and verify, uh, have you meet with our lender and our equity provider, um, you know, whatever means we need you to have that be public.
What if the lender and the equity partner come up with different land values?
Uh, it typically wouldn't be. So it, so it, typically it will be actually the debt provider will come up with, um, come up with it in advance and that will be based upon the same budget that we'll be agreeing to with the equity provider.
Okay. Are we going to outline that, the specifics in the...
In the CA negotiation.
In the CA?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Ardi?
I just had one for now. Um, so this question combination probably for Mr. Goldman as well as, um, city attorney. So I noted that, uh, we added language that called out that the pilot payments will be unsubordinated and have priority all, over all the other payments obligations of the project. So I'm glad that's in there. Should we also clarify that the land payments are also going to be unsubordinated? Is that the assumption that those also take priority? And should we get that language in there?
They are, and I don't know if it's, um... Trying to think whether it needs to be in there or not. They are intended to be unsubordinated and we can figure out maybe Carol and Jeff and our attorney Robert can talk about whether that's how that gets handled or if it's part of the CA or the...
It's good the intention is that, is there.
That's the intention.
Maybe let's make sure the legal language reflects that too.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. That's it for now.
All right. Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Littenhouse had time to crunch his calculator. Do I need to talk to fill the space? It looks like he's still crunching. I think I'm talking.
You could, you could pass around the potato chips.
Yeah. You asked for it, so...
Wow, that was quick.
That's the, that's how you responded to the threat that, that I'm going to keep talking.
I thought you were going to share the potato chips.
Yeah, exactly. Sorry, I never had a chance to eat food all day long today. And if I'm going to power through this meeting, I had to have something. Uh, okay, well, I'll fill a little more space for Mr. Littenhouse. He looks like he's still busy. Uh, just to understand the process, so this is still the interim agreement, right? I mean, this is sort of where we were back however long ago it was, six weeks ago. We were still now going to really now sit down and negotiate a comprehensive agreement, right? So in some respects, we're resetting the clock, although the time has still, you know, elapsed, so we're not extending the time, are we?
No, we're, we're, we've been staying on the critical path. The special exception application really being really important to the overall schedule, is on track. It hit all of its time milestones. The, uh, due diligence period extension that was granted, um, runs through tomorrow.
Right.
And so the, uh, intent and the goal is that we'll be out of due diligence tomorrow upon the council's favorable consideration of this, uh, agreement.
And the amendment itself does provide that now the, um, due diligence is ended and that they haven't terminated and that they will be then, um, obligated to post the additional bond within this schedule as originally laid out.
Okay. Um, all right. Well, I just, you know, when I first wrote it on this, um, I but did so with some reservations and I think the minutes reflected what they were. As I recall, uh, I thought the housing mix was a little thin on affordability. And I was concerned about the vagueness of the mobility facility, I like to call it. The garage is what other people call it because I, I just think the land that we are giving over to parking is, is important now, but maybe 10 years from now, it's going to be used for something else. So we should, we should build this thing in a way that that space is flexible and, and, you know, a standalone, uh, structure is appealing to me because if we go and dig, you know, under the whole rest of the project, a big parking garage, what happens when we don't need to park as many cars down the road as we think we do now? And my other reservation was, I'm not even sure I've shared this except with a few of my colleagues, that the Little City Commons name is just dead to me. Because, you know, it, it waters down the real Little City brand. I mean, there are plenty of places in town that are little and they're going to be that way forever. Um, and that's great. This is not little and, and I think that's great too. Uh, so I, I would ask wherever, whenever we get to the stage where we name this thing, that we at least consider a community discussion about whether we could come up with something besides the Little City for this part of the city of Falls Church. At any rate, um, so seems like where we stand now, we've improved from my perspective, uh, what we voted on before. The, the housing, as I referred to earlier, has a, it's not strictly speaking, uh, you know, that much more affordable, but in legal terms, but there are more micro units, more condominiums, uh, that's good. Do the numbers for ADUs travel with, uh, so the percentage stays the same, the numbers of ADUs or in-lu-ubs, uh, uh, apply to this extra square footage given over?
Yeah, it's probably, depending on which scheme we go with, if we were to go to, with the micro units, it's probably another 12 affordable units or slightly less.
So are we going to know that by the CA or, or not? Are we going to pick a, a number for, you know, how many are micro units and how many are condos and so forth?
So it's, it's, that's a good question. So I, our goal would be to by May 28th, we've picked a scheme and, and we're moving forward. Um, especially since we're going to have to move quickly to get through the SAE site plan process and permitting and it's time to break ground. So we kind of need to have a program set by the spring.
I applaud that goal. I think it'd be good to be able to tell the community, you know, exactly what they're getting in terms of affordability. Uh, the, you know, the mobility facility still seems to be kind of up in the air and that's just something we're going to have to work through.
By May, hopefully by May on that one as well, that that decision would be made by May as well.
It's very important that the school's parking needs as they exist today here now be met in this project. And I'm optimistic that they can be met in a way that 10 years from now doesn't leave us with some, uh, you know, lemon dinosaur of a parking garage that we don't need anymore.
Agreed.
Um, so, uh, parking, underground parking that we don't need anymore. So I would encourage us to go in that direction. And yeah, it's too early to decide what the Little City Commons is going to be called, but let's just keep talking about that. And just from the highest level, is it generally accurate to say that Mr. Snyder's point, which he's made several times very well and understandably is, you know, I, he wanted more money upfront. I won't speak for him, but my interpretation is he wants more money upfront because the security of that is obvious. Uh, the other approach is to sort of spread that money out over a longer period of time for reasons that have to do with your ability to finance and risk and so forth. And so if I vote for this, I'm kind of going with a philosophy that says this money is going to come to us, but it's going to come to us over a longer period of time than we might have thought when we initially voted on the interim agreement the first time. Is that broadly speaking the case?
Yeah, I can answer first. So that, so there's no change to the land payments value or timing from what you voted on in December or November? It's the exact same? The only difference is on the taxes, that there would be a deferral of some of the taxes that would have been expected and those would get paid over a longer period of time, um, with slightly more net present value to the city. So a little bit more value, but spread out over a longer period of time. But the land value payments have not changed at all from what you've originally seen.
Okay. Is that...
Yes, that's accurate. I mean, I think the substantial, uh, the main part of the payments is remaining and has been firm throughout. And there are, some of these things have moved a little bit around the edge with the pilot adjusting so that upfront payments can be made later and a little bit more will come in later. And then we've increased the profit sharing, um, payments as Mr. Shields described. And those things may come in a little bit later, but now they're a little bit higher as well.
Okay. All right. I'm about ready to wrap up because I think Mr. Littenhouse is about finished with his calculations. I mean, I understand how people could see it the other way, but it's just always been my, uh, hope that this property up here would be a kind of a long-term endowment for the public school system, you know, to pay for a new high school, which is the flagship of our, you know, facilities improvement campaign we've been on for the last several years. And to me, it's okay if councils down the road are benefiting from things that we decide here today. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And finally, just in conclusion, uh, I, I do want to thank, uh, because all these meetings had to occur in private and, you know, for obvious reasons. But, uh, it's too bad the public could not have been exposed to the, the work that was done by staff for sure, uh, but also by individual members of this council who have unique expertise and, uh, you know, Mr. Z is not here today. He, he, he's in this group too. Uh, really bring unique expertise in real estate, deal-making and finance and, uh, analysis of complicated projects. And I, I just hope that the, the folks in the city will, uh, be aware that, uh, you know, a lot of hard work has gone into this and, and it's, it's not always been, uh, it's been tough at times. But, uh, this is a, this is a project that has, uh, improved, I think, since we voted on it, uh, the first time. And I hope it continues to improve so that a final comprehensive agreement to some of these concerns that I've expressed will be resolved. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Mr. Duncan, I hear that the schools are naming a street, so maybe there's a good name that they will share.
Right.
Yeah, the school street will have a new name, and there's many, many extras.
I think we call it La Porta West.
Yes, so I want to read here what Mr. Duncan just said about the expertise of the members of city council, because I also have been impressed in all these closed meetings with the knowledge and expertise that my colleagues bring to this conversation as well as staff, because I think it has pushed us forward, and I really do appreciate the work that has gone into this. I'm glad to see that we're still on track. One of the things that makes me nervous as we go forward is all these deadlines that we have to meet. So, I'm glad we're on track for this one. And what's our next deadline, once we get through tomorrow, today? We have a deadline, is it SCE deadlines or parking garage deadlines?
Well, the good news is that Carly's in charge of the special exception process, and that has been moving actually right on time. The hard work, a lot of the hard work is going to be on the comprehensive agreement, and there aren't really milestones like there are with the special exception. So, we really need to be disciplined in our use of time and surface the big hard issues so that we're not delaying them until May. We need, if there are hard things that we need to work out, we need to wrestle with them now.
Yeah.
And the garage is certainly one of them.
I think that's really important because that did, I mean, we've been talking about this amendment for about a month, and it took a while to really get it down to its very essence. So, May 28th is not that far away. So, I think we need to really look at what those upcoming deadlines are and work on them. And then, this, we're going to approve this, and it's going to go out to boards and commissions. So, the SCE is going to go out to boards and commissions?
Yeah, the SCE is going out to boards and commissions, and we could speak to that schedule if you'd like more detail on that. And the council also will be formally referring it out. You'll be looking at it at a work session next week and then referring it out on February 25th.
Okay.
Two weeks.
So, that will be an opportunity then for community comment, starting in two weeks.
That's right.
And they'll have about a month, boards and commissions and individuals to weigh back in.
That's right.
Before we get to a second.
Then, one other key thing that council will be looking at a week from now is the draft subdivision plat, and that's another thing that is part of the process.
Okay, okay. So, all these different timelines, I appreciate people keeping track of them, and I really do want to make sure that we're ahead of the game as we get into May. And that's all. Thank you.
All right. Who else has got something to say? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. I, too, want to thank my members of council who've worked very hard on this and city staff. I'll be voting no on this for the following reasons. First of all, I voted no on this particular proposal early on because I was concerned about the financial aspects. And unfortunately, within several weeks after we thought we had an agreement, that agreement was requested to be undone in a significant way. The total amount is, as I understand it, is roughly $7 million give back to the developer in two forms. First of all, a deferral of payments, and then, second of all, additional profit-making residential units, which are a clear slam dunk profit for the developer. Now, much has been said about these units being smaller and being condos. Well, if they're so good to have those type units, and I don't disagree, why weren't they more a part of the original proposal rather than simply add it on later? The next issue is there's a discussion about student generation estimates, but nowhere does it suggest student generation estimates from residential units right next door to the middle school and the high school that will no doubt generate more than the average students. Next, because of the recommended change, this project is even less commercial than it was before. Yet again, we're being talked into a primarily residential development in what should be a primarily commercial development if, in fact, what we're talking about is long-term value and adding to the community what we don't have. We don't need a lot of residential units. What we need is commercial. What we're getting is another top-heavy residential project. The next point is the risk to the city goes up with the delay in payments, and I want to underscore that. We're in a very volatile period right now, and the delay does indicate an increase in risk to the city, and yet, that's nowhere compensated. I don't see any sort of an Amazon premium here. I don't see potential reward to the city as a result of what I think will obviously be the case with the Amazon development, so I don't see that in here as well. So, and then, finally, my question is if we give in on this one, what will happen next week or the week after that? Will there be more demands that we'll have to meet in order to keep the developer in the picture, realizing that with the further delay in time, it puts even more pressure on us to agree to something in order to be able to fund the schools? So, I respectfully disagree. I would have followed and thoroughly considered other options. I think we had them. We decided not to. I think as a result, we weakened our negotiating position. But I do want to come back to the hard work that was put in. It is regrettable that it was not done in public session because I think the public should have heard as we were going along what the demands were the developer was actually making on us and how hard we, the council, had to work in order to satisfy those demands. So, for all those reasons, I'll vote no. I wish, I hope that we don't have to deal with this again. I hope this project will get better than it appears to be right now. And so, I am hopeful for that, but based upon what I've seen, I'm not impressed. So, thanks much, and for all these reasons, I'll be voting against the proposed amendment to the interim agreement. Thank you.
All right. Other comments? You up? Ready? Mr. Littenhouse, sure.
What was the anticipated purchase price of the condos?
For the purchasers? We assumed approximately $600 to $650 per square foot. So, $650 times 1250 would be about $800, I think.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
$650 times 1250 on average, I think, is about $800,000.
Yeah, okay. I was, I'm just looking at our total.
Yeah, $812.
So, I'm going back to the capital event fee for getting it on first sale. It's $600 a square foot on the sale price. That's an additional $262,500 for the city if it goes up. If you guys sell at 700, that's around $306,250. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
What you guys calculated?
Yes.
So, that would be the additional 25 basis points on first sale. That's what that would be to the city.
That seems right.
Okay. In terms of the additional density, just trying to wrap my mind around the net fiscal impact, just taking a look at some of the modeling that we have. If I'm, and again, that 170, that $262,500, $600 a square foot is for the original 175,000 square feet? She said that was the original proposal?
I'm sorry, I lost you there. The original.
So, the original Phase 1 condos?
Right.
175,000 square feet?
Yeah, that was the original Phase 1.
Correct. Okay. So, it's $600 a square foot. That capital event fee that was negotiated into this is around $262,500. If half of what you guys are proposing from a density perspective is on top of that, we're probably around, I think it's like 375 or so in terms of that additional capital event fee. Because my understanding is this capital event fee is going to apply to all of the condos, right?
That's right.
Correct. Every single one of those.
Yep.
Okay. In terms of the net fiscal impact on the residential piece, assuming that we use, and this is maybe just talking to myself out loud, but if anybody was just interested, at 150,000 square feet, if you're looking at the net fiscal impact, and we assume around $400 a square foot, assess value on this based on a tax rate, the current tax rate of around 1.34. We're looking at about $804,000 just on the real estate tax side, and if we take just kind of a general 70% ratio, assuming some loss for the $15,000 a year that it costs the city to put students in there, plus some of the other costs to the city, you know, we're probably around $565,000 in terms of net fiscal impact for that additional 150,000 going forward each year. So, I think it's important to think about as this project has progressed, you know, what is accretive to the city. And I was remiss in mentioning this last time, and I think this has gotten lost in some of the negotiations when we talk about the density of this site and the percentage of commercial and residential. Obviously, talking about residential in the context of development in this city is a bit of a flashpoint for a number of reasons. However, what is being proposed here, I truly believe, does not put a significant or even material burden on the school system, not to mention the fact that this proposal, even as it stands right now, even if every single one of these units were to-go apartments, is still 200 units less than our second place that we were considering. So, it's still significantly less in terms of residential density, and I think that that's important for folks to understand, not to mention the fact that what's being proposed here, higher net fiscal impact to the city and less fiscal impact than some of what would typically be a market rate, traditional size, apartment unit. So, I wanted to put some of those out there for folks to consider. As I'd stated before, you know, we crossed what I think is a critical crossroads. It was unfortunate that we had to address this as early on as we did, and I certainly hope that we're not going to have to have any material changes to the negotiations or anything related to the comprehensive agreement outside of nailing down some of the, some of the specific terms. So, for what it's worth for a council to digest in terms of back of the envelope, nobody hold me to those numbers. It was done on my iPhone and a legal pad, but I think it is important to understand that as part of this, to help deal with what frankly was a significant problem from a financeability perspective, the city is actually, I think, from a fiscal perspective, better off. And then, the last thing that I will say, I certainly agree with a number of folks who look at the upfront payment as the most important aspect. I, for one, like to find a balance. I'm actually in favor of an annuity of payments for the city. I think it behooves us as a city to put in place mechanisms that live beyond this initial phase of this project, which is why I'm happy with the capital event fee that we built in, the profit share, and some of the other mechanisms around ground rent that are going to allow us to reap benefits on this project long after it comes out of the ground, stabilizes, and turns to a different owner, which it inevitably will. And I think that we've, I think that we've struck that balance of achieving a significant amount of money upfront as well as building in some annuity payments that are going to benefit the city, our commercial tax base for a very, very long time. I think some of the things that we've been able to negotiate through some very difficult conversations are to the benefit of the city and are not something that you would typically see even in a complicated project like this. So, I've been, I've been pleased with what we've been able to achieve, assuming that this project does happen, which after all of this, it better happen, and it certainly should happen the way that we've contemplated and where we are today. So, again, I also thank the folks on council and with city staff that have spent an inordinate amount of time helping negotiate and work through this. And so, those are my thoughts, and I'll turn it over to anybody else who has any final questions.
Is that a signal, Mr. Duncan, as you want to?
I don't know.
Sure. Ms. Hardy, go for it.
So, it's been a long six weeks dealing with this, and so, I appreciate both staff's work as well as kind of our collaboration and kind of really trying to help you all through this problem. I would say that going forward, hopefully, it's worked both ways. So, hopefully that if, you know, anything else comes up down the road from our end as well, that we see kind of equal collaboration and give and take.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's been a good process.
So, there's no way to improve upon what Mr. Littenhouse said, and I won't try. That was well, well said. And I agree with Ms. Hardy also. You know, we've been arguing in this city for at least 20 years about whether the right kind of residential pays for itself or not, and I anticipate we'll argue about it for the next 20 years. But in this time and in this place, we need to try to marshal the best data and, you know, experiential information we can to try to explain to the public what it is we are up to here. And so, I would like two pieces of information from somebody, either staff or from the applicant. One is, is there any other jurisdiction that has roughly the same characteristics as the city of Falls Church, which is to say in a urban edge city, community, where there is a project which is more commercial than residential? And what is the nature of that project, if there is one? There is some sort of implication that we are getting suckered into a deal that other jurisdictions are too smart to take.
Right.
And if that's true, I'd like to know that.
Yeah.
If it's not true, I would certainly like to try to educate, you know, the citizenry that what we are doing here is rational and reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, and we're happy to look into that, and we do a lot of, we do a lot of master planning in general. In my last organization, which had a very big commercial presence on the retail side, we did those types of analyses as well. And I think what, what a lot of jurisdictions are suffering from is the fact that there's been such a change in the way people work. And all through the, I graduated college in 1995 and was an architect, and all through the 90s, while I was working in architecture, people would make these comments, oh, some people are going to telework, and it's going to change how people use office, and people are looking at hoteling concepts, and all these ideas that were out there as creative ways to save space and make office more efficient. And nobody was really seeing those changes happen in the 90s. So, everybody kind of put them off as saying they're never really going to change anything. And then, the recession hit in 2008, and it changed everything, right? So, every company out there is looking for, how can I be more efficient? How can I use less space? How can I spend more, less money on real estate? How, and people have started thinking with traffic, how do I telework? How do I not have to be in the office every day? And so, as a result, we have a certain amount of square footage of office space out there, and we have tenants using less and less of that square footage, and that's resulted in a lower demand for new office space in general. Where it can be successful, and what we will, we believe and 100% believe will happen here, is that a lot of the office buildings are obsolete. They're getting older. They don't necessarily cater to what new employees want, especially technology companies or companies that are trying to attract younger employees. And so, projects where you have mixed use, near transit, often can create an office environment that outperforms other office in the market. And we saw this at Pike and Rose at Federal Realty where no one in the world believed that we could build an office building in North Bethesda. Rents in that market were in the $28 to $32 a foot range, and we delivered a building at $42.50 a foot, and it leased up and has done really well, and it's a beautiful office building. And so, there are projects, Mosaic has done this as well just down the road from you. So, the key is how do we build the right footprint, the right environment, the right retail mix, create that sense of place, and then, that will help us to deliver the office, which is also why we're bullish on the Phase 2 office here. The residential component is critical to that. So, you need residents, you need the retail to thrive, and it's not just going to thrive on office lunchtime traffic. And so, at the end of the day, you have to have residents there at night. Hotel guests as well are really good for that. Senior housing is actually great for it as well. People that are going to be in those restaurants on a regular basis at night as well, so that the restaurateurs can have at lunchtime, ideally, a breakfast, lunch, and dinner throughout their day, and that's what allows restaurants to make money as well and survive. So, it's this really great symbiosis between the uses. You want the residential there, you also want the office there. Neither of them work particularly well when they're isolated, and we've seen that with the office parks throughout this region that are dying, and quite frankly, the sleepy residential neighborhoods that don't have amenities. So, you know, when you can mix them together really well, that's when you get great success, and that's what we're going to do here.
Okay. Well, you're obviously an articulate evangelist for your point of view, and I agree with it, but, you know, we do need to try to bring everyone else along who is not yet part of the parade.
Right.
So, whatever can be done by applicant and staff to, you know, give people some perspective about what's happening at Pike and Rose, what's the percentages there, what... Okay, enough on that point. The second thing, more briefly, relates to schoolchildren. So, 47 is what we predicted. You claim, we claim, it's being claimed now, there's only going to be 10 additional more. What happens, let me phrase it in terms of a please do, please calculate the condominiums that you're going to put in at the Pearson Square kid ratio, because that's what you hear people in the community are saying. You know, Pearson Square is supposed to open as, I mean, it's supposed to be condominiums, well-built, big units, you know, we had to flip them to, we allowed the flip to apartments, and, you know, the place is, has high public service costs. It's a great place for families. We love families here in Falls Church. If this project with its condominiums with a price tag of 800,000-plus is so close to the new school facilities, which is true it is, is it unreasonable to assume that that might have a higher kid count? If it does have a higher kid count, one, what's the fiscal impact of that? How much does it pull down the numbers that we're getting? And two, how does it affect space? Do we still have space to educate these children? My impression is that it's not going to cause a capacity problem at any level of school because the 50... because the 57 kids or 75 kids or whatever the number is would be spread out through the 13 grades, right? So no one grade is going to get more than half a section at worst. But those are the kinds of numbers that I'm always drawn towards Ms. Hardy's approach of trying to bring numbers to a discussion and believe that, you know, the people will read and understand those numbers, and we can make policy based on it. So let's try to do that.
Okay.
And is there any experience in any other jurisdiction about proximity to a school of a kind of residence influencing the kid mix in that residence? You know, when Arlington built Wakefield, I mean, built the new Wakefield, the fabulous new Wakefield High School, did any of the residences around it see a larger swing of kids coming into those residences because, wow, it's within walking distance of a high school? That's kind of interesting. We heard that discussed when we did Founder's Row, that because it was a little closer to the high school, there are going to be more kids there. Well, we don't know because Founder's Row is not open yet, but is there some jurisdiction that can give us some experiential data on that? Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Let's go ahead and open this up to public comment. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any additional comments, questions from council? Do you want to move to motion then?
Mr. Mayor moved up, TR 19-07.
You have a second.
Second.
Second. All right. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littgenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries five to one.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, let's keep on moving. It looks like we have no consent items today. Is that correct? All right. Any business not on the agenda? Okay. Standing, regional committee, council liaison reports? All right. Approval of the minutes, November 13, 2017. Okay. Does anybody remember back exactly what was said at that meeting? I know you do.
Mr. or Ms. Connolly, Vice Mayor and I agree that they seem fine, so I move approval of the minutes to the meeting in November 13, 2017.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
No, we don't have a second.
I'll second.
We do have a second. All right. We, let me ask the city attorney, by roll call or by voice vote?
Voice. Excuse me? I'm sorry.
I'm not the city.
You can, I think you can do it by, either way.
No preference on your part?
Correct.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Our minutes of November 27, 2017. Eagle Eye Duncan, what's it?
By ear.
What?
I just want to comment that these minutes, there was comments about making sure that the high school is green, and Mr. Stevens is mentioned in there. He doesn't see that. Back in 2017, so thank you.
That's right.
Everything else is fine.
Have they decided on color for the high school?
Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk, I have serious problems with the minutes of November 27, 2017. On line 262, I want you to know that some, somebody has quoted some wacko who came into the meeting, and I think we need to strike that comment because this is freshman hazing like they do down in Richmond. Line 262 would be comments from a gentleman named Ross Littgenhouse, who believed that we need to have somebody who knew what they were doing on city council so that we could get this project right.
Well, we'll make, we'll figure that out one day. One day we'll have someone.
Mr. Mayor, the minutes of that meeting, as, as the comments that Mr. Littgenhouse made were so flawless, are, seem fine, and I move their approval November 27, 2017.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
In the spirit of Gary Laporta, who always liked a good laugh.
Could I ask a question? How many more minutes from 2017 do we have? I mean, that's like a year, and some citizens, well, prefer to look at the video, others prefer to read the summary version.
Right.
So how are we coming with that?
This is, this is the cleanup. I think we have a December of that year, but this is the final cleanup of the ones that have been sitting there waiting for me to read. And we do, just so you do know, we do a summary minutes the day after the meeting, just so that's up there along with the video, has all the votes, and so these are fleshing out more of the conversation.
Do we have much of a backup from 2018 at this point?
We have some, but we are on crusade, and we've gotten a system down that's really getting them rolling along. So we're going to, we're actually on track to start producing them fairly quickly after the meetings now, so.